The next one on our agenda is water runoff on Rice Connor Road. And we had an email here from Krista LaBroom.
Yep.
I'm her husband.
We have Google Maps and everything.
Actually, I did actually print out the kind of erosion that's happening. Essentially, it's crossing the road on the road and it's stripping into my yard and then a budding neighbor here. I also have video footage of the kind of water that's shooting through our yard and hoping that something can be done to reroute it. All kinds of consideration there is. We're new to the town. We've been about six months. We have plans for our yard. Ever since land was developed, it's really funneling the water. Hardcore, but it's coming off of the state land and then over the town's street and then a lot of erosion, so I don't know.
You're not quite at the bottom of the hill.
We are. So, you know, he has a little piping that's supposed to reroute the water later on, but you can really see from this video footage that I have right here you shared, the water's really flowing like a river off the land up top.
Now, when was this footage taken?
This was about two weeks ago.
Now, is this, is it continuing like this all the time?
I hear that it's seasonal. Like I said, we've only been there for about six months. So now it's relatively dry, but over time, this is going to erode and I'm just going to build a little valley here. I might as well build a little bridge.
Your house is up high.
Was that your house in the back? Was it just the yellow house?
So that's Fred's house right here.
And you're, who are you, sir?
My name is Fred Rogers on 120 Rice Connor Road.
I'm 118, so can we fast forward a little bit?
They are just guilty. I think you best to worry about my land now because since I've only begun.
Right. So there was consideration about development of the house and the way the water was flowing, but really, we can see that there's a waterfall pouring off of the state lands down the road, creating this kind of erosion and then shooting down to his yard and really just creating a crazy flow of water, so.
And I'm sure if you had just mentioned down below, I went down and walked through there in this big gouge where the water's really cutting its way down back. I'm not sure where I stopped property heading down towards Gate Road. You know, it's got to kind of walk that way. And it's pretty.
It's probably ending in my field this way. I got all the water. That's all over the town.
Is that you up there?
No, no, no. I'm across the street on Gate Road. So if you, or on Gate Road, you'll see my big barn. And you're coming down that hill.
So what?
So we have a lot of water up because we are at the bottom of the hill.
So what happens is, I'll explain from my years of living here. Chris and Maureen live across the street. May I ask Chris to come over and check something out one day? So when you have a big winter and you have two or three feet of snow sitting up on that hill, then you get a warm day and we get like, say, two inches of rain. All that combined is unbelievable mass of water that flies down that hill, through that field, and my whole backyard was covered to my garage, the back of my garage, all the way to the wood line. Now, the donor wrote messier of the whole house prior to me had made a swale with, they put four, four-inch pipes in there to catch the water. And as it rose, they thought those pipes would handle that. It's not going to touch it. It comes right above that and it just goes like crazy.
Now, was that installed by the homeowner or the developer?
I'm sorry?
The, the suite on your top.
I bought the home, so I couldn't tell you who did it. I would probably say the homeowner did it. If I had to guess, it's a, to try to make this sort of.
Did they need to redirect it?
So that I could do something because they put a pool in the backyard and all that. So we've got to say, we've got to get this water away from that area. So it's not considered, or I mean naturally, it's not considered wetlands because you're allowing house lots to be built there. So he happened to be the first house lot. When they built it, they put it up towards the road and they built a burn in the back of his yard, which now keeps that water more in one direction. Now, the builder, from what I understand, is approved to build another house next to his, which so if you have a house here, his house, and then you're going to put another house here, and the water's coming off of this hill, you've now created a funnel, as well as the erosion that's coming off of the road. The road is eroding itself. Now, from what I understand, when Jeff had spoken to someone, they said, well, that's going to be the builder's responsibility. Okay, great. But he's not responsible for what the road is now eroding away. You can go look at that yourself any given day. The road is starting to erode because of that water. So it's coming under the road as well as over the road when it's real heavy rains. Now you say, okay, does it only happen in the wintertime? If we've had heavy spring rain or heavy summer storms, where you get, you know, three or four inches of rain, it's still, now it's coming again. So therefore, your backyard, he has a littler, literally a river going through his backyard. And then naturally, I go through my backyard and it's coming down the yard.
Yep, so he has handled all of the hill.
So do I have a solution to the problem? No. But if we're going to put it on the builder, I would like the builder not to build this house, which is going to create a bigger funnel area. At least stop that until we figure out how we're going to correct this problem, which I believe is a problem that needs to be corrected. Somebody at some point in time knew years ago, because I believe this was all found and I don't come around here. I just bought my house six or seven years ago, too. That was all found and couldn't put any of those houses.
Yeah, it was growing steadily up here.
So everybody knows water came down for a number and number of years and yet they decided to let people build houses there. Well, they knew that at some point in time it was going to be an issue. I had stopped in at the town hall and they agreed that it's an issue that needs to be resolved, not the town hall, at the garage. And they did, they agreed that this is something that was going to have to get addressed at some point in time.
But I think it's really two parts of it.
Yeah.
Certainly, we've got the road and Herb's back in the corner and we certainly will have responsibilities to do something about the road to prevent erosion. On the flip side, just because of the, you're almost in a swale in that area and it's all coming in that direction.
Sure.
It really does need front straining or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, or some sort of catch basin before another house.
And really want, my mind's going a little bit to say that it really wants to be an order, if that, if that particular house were to be built, it would be part of an order of conditions. Now, is that builder, the same builder that you bought from?
Correct.
Have you approached them as far as the idea of front straining and that sort of thing?
I looked for a solution that has not been even considered.
No. Who was the owner?
The builder's refusing or?
Just not a consideration.
He's basically stuck you? Is, I mean, that's my interpretation.
We were kind of blindsided by the fact that this occurred. It was, we were notified it was somewhat of a stream, not a river during the season. So what I mentioned to him and I asked him to come here tonight, obviously, he's not present, so consideration of.
The conservation?
Where's Kenny?
Ken, could you?
I'm not going to solve it tonight.
No, we're not.
This is Mr. Cleveland from the Conservation Commission.
I believe I spoke with you on the phone, Ken? Fred Rogers? I spoke with you on the phone, I believe?
Yes.
And did you happen to come down, take a look at the back of my house? I granted you commission to walk on my property and take a good look at things.
Right now, yes.
I'm sorry?
When I issued the building sequence form for that house next to you, everything was long and dry. And we went back after, they got their building permit, we went back and we wrote out an order of, of order conditions. Everything was dry, so I don't see a problem. I don't understand where the water's coming from, whether it's coming off the road.
I hope they actually have video footage of it shooting off of the road. But I can show you what's, it's certainly coming off of that state lands and it's also a problem.
Again, we're not going to solve this tonight. But what I'm thinking, now I'm here on.
Do you want to call?
This is the lot, me and then my lot.
Yeah, just, well. No, I just, everybody needs to get together. I mean, we can't solve it unless we, we're not smart enough.
So I think we may want to put a working group together, one of us, maybe a member of the planning board, maybe a member of the contract.
Interesting to know what your conditions were.
Start with Herb and Kenny.
To say basically, the land has to be dry before he starts building is one of the.
Herb and Ken, well, the plane or Hawaii.
Ken, I can understand it.
Depends on if the building, it's already been issued for the other house.
We're talking about when you got three feet of snow in the winter and it's melting and it's coming down like a river.
This isn't even three feet.
No, no.
Right, but the site, we don't have to be a site plan at some point and the site plan doesn't include some water.
This is under moderate. I've seen it when you got three feet of snow, four feet of snow, and then you get a warm rain, two inches of rain, plus all of that. I can show you as the water's down the back of my property. There's a dugout, kind of like, if you look at the Grand Canyon, there's a big dugout from the water that's going down. This is Jones' property.
Yeah, it all, this is string. Eventually gets to the stream by then.
What's happening in the back of Fred's house here.
I've asked Chris to come over and take a look and he saw it, it was as, almost as wide as his room and it was gone. I mean, that's not just a little bit of water and it's a major problem.
Well, there's a string eventually.
So all I'm asking is that we stop, if he has a permit or a building permit, I'm asking before he puts this next house up, I'm not opposing the house, but let's solve the problem before this gets done because he doesn't want to hear about anything on his behalf of taking care of the water problem.
The draining it or redirecting it somehow. I mean, when I bought one point seven acres of land with the vision to, you know, have a nice swing set and use that useful land for my family, I have a two and a half-year-old and I have a little four-month-old. My vision was kind of destroyed when I said, well, now I have a river going.
Yep.
Dimension is going to be a little valid.
Sharon, did you have some input on this?
Planning Board has no input on individual house lots. We only have input if it's a subdivision or if there's an obvious need for a site plan, such as an elaborate building project with many factors to it. And I would suggest you talk to the building inspector.
Yeah, they should talk.
And again, I'm thinking Kenny's going to talk to Herb and worry about the road and then.
Do you want to loop Jeff in perhaps?
And then I'm thinking Kenny with Jeff and to have you party to it. Because what, again, if it's the same builder and he stiffened you for not doing it.
And I don't want to use those words. I'm just saying, resolving the issue and kind of deciding what.
The issue has to be resolved before he puts another house.
And it's really, it's multi-pronged. It's not just one way or the other.
I agree with some condition to reroute or drain. You know, I don't, I don't need to block a house from being built, but if that is going to help, you know.
I'm just asking before we build the next house, which is going to funnel even further the condition gets resolved.
So Kenny, can you work with Jeff?
Sure.
And make sure you get their contact information?
I know where they live.
Good to know.
Okay, that's good. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in tonight.
If you need to get together with anyone else, we're going to leave you here.
You're working with him.
I'm going to work with Ken right now.
But I know he's.
Figure it out with Herb.
The builder's looking to move forward soon.
Yeah, so I don't know if there's anything you can do about that, but the builder is ready to put a job on the ground tomorrow, so.
So Kenny, does he have a statement of order conditions yet?
Not yet. The other person doesn't have a, doesn't have a building sequence form to get a building permit for your house.
And what we understand is ready to go put a well in.
Maybe he's going to put the well in, but I haven't signed a building sequence form so he can go get a building permit.
Perfect.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking.
Molly, did you have anything?
And bring the visuals while he's here.
Okay.
All right, what's next?
Okay. I think you were going to.
Clarence wanted to talk about thirty Kimball.
Thirty Kimball.
Oh, yeah.
I showed it to Clarence that, just that verse. Oh, and I wanted to talk to, about something related to thirty Kimball. So I was going to piggyback on that.
So we have permission? Am I correct?
It's right there.
Everything is right here.
That's the date where you had, where you came. The date has passed, so you definitely.
Oh, okay. So, so, so we're clear. So we can now go to, who's going to do the contracting?
It's going to be the contractor.
Okay, so, so, so the decision to be made tonight is that we have three buildings. Keep them going. We have three buildings that we can take down. We need to practice on one to see what we're going to be doing. So the idea would be to write, to go out for bid for the one house and see where we are with it.
Yeah, we can do that. And you were thinking thirty Kimball is the one we ought to start on?
It's. Yeah, yeah, Herb, give us some ideas.
You just said go out for bid for what? I didn't know.
Tear down thirty Kimball. Which, which house do we start with? Do we start?
Who's doing it?
Fourth, pardon me?
Who's going to be doing it?
We're going to go out to bid. We're looking for some direction.
Oh, okay.
Unless you think that the, unless you thought the highway department wanted it.
I.
He's out of money.
I give him all the money at work, but being real honest, I don't think you're going to get him torn down for the money that you got.
So the idea of practicing to do one at a time. We have nine thousand appropriated. And so to tear down one and see where we are with the nine grand is probably a good idea.
I go out for bid for the heck of it and see what the bid comes in, but don't own board it, for as I'm concerned, to see what it is. My recommendation on that.
Okay.
I think I would be interested to see what the price difference would be if we went out to bid for perhaps that one and maybe Four South Maple and just see what the price difference is between the two of them.
Because didn't we appropriate nine thousand to take each of them?
No, nine total.
Nine total?
Yeah, and that's Herb's point.
Yeah, we're not going to get anybody to come in.
So back to, there are three buildings. Four South Maple, Thirty Kimball, Sixteen North Brookfield Road. The reason I said Kimball is that it's, people pass on Mill Street, they'll see what we're doing. And so that we're serious about doing something.
Herb is saying Four South Maple.
Maple Street.
Better?
Four South Maple. I do South Maple and get that number up the center.
Okay, all right. I stand corrected?
Yep. We'll start with that one.
So it's Four South, okay.
And people can see what's going on there.
They'll see that.
All right. Good. Thanks, Herb.
Okay, Ken.
Do you need these back?
I hope you don't want me to do it immediately because I'm bored. It's really busy with, I'm getting prepped.
Okay. Next thing on our agenda.
I gave my other way.
Is resignation.
Yep.
Okay. This resignation to the Honorable Board of Selectmen. As of this ninth day of April 2018, I give my resignation to the Town of Brookfield. My last day of work will be April 20th, 2018, from the Treasurer's Department. My resignation comes with a heavy heart due to the hostile work environment, including the ambush attack on my personal character and integrity for my fellow department heads. She says, I do, however, appreciate the appointment to fill the treasurer's position while being employed by the Board of Health Secretary, and she was Assistant Town Clerk and, we looked at her, Officer. A records, public records access officer. And she's going to continue doing both positions, but she's going to be resigning as the treasurer. And I really hate to take this resignation because she's been doing an excellent job. It's a shame.
She was trying.
She was trying.
But with that, we need a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion to accept her resignation.
I'll second.
Any, any discussion on this at all?
Well, what we have to do is.
Oh, I understand.
Create a search.
Yeah.
The key is going to be, I think, we really need to ensure we're all aligned from a standpoint of what the requisite training is as people come in. Because I think one of the things that's difficult is finding somebody who has both the financial and human resources background to be comfortable in both aspects of that role.
Well, we do have, we have an assistant treasurer and she's willing to take over the human resources section of it, so the treasurer doesn't.
She's been doing it anyway.
She's been doing it. Holly's been doing it.
So do we have a commitment from Keith to continue?
Yeah, Keith said that he will stay on and he'll help out and he said that he'll, you know, probably with the training. And he said, I asked him when we put out the job ad again, if he would sit in with us to pick up treasurer and he said he would.
I really, really think that we need to do that.
Yeah, that's what we, yeah. Keith said he will stay on with us. I mean, I don't know for how long, but we've got to get this out again. I mean, it's a shame this happened because she already went to school, she started schooling last year, she's been getting training on VEDAR and, you know, it's, it's a shame. This has happened because she, she straightened out, there was a problem with teachers' retirement down at Tantascwa and it's been going on for a long time. And she, we got a call from Tantascwa, Holly did, and said that she thinks the shame is happening because she straightened out this problem that nobody could straighten out. And then she was going to start in on more problems, too. And we've tried to talk to her to come stay with us and we've worked with problems, but she said she just can't do that.
No, we may have to even consider contracted services just because we.
I think for the, I think for the interim, we may need to do that in order to complete the account reconciliation that we're trying to do.
But I think we need to, look to Keith to give us good direction.
Keith will give us good direction. Okay, so everybody in favor of this?
Well, no, but yes.
I know we're not in favor, but we have to.
Accepting the resignation.
Yes.
Yes, we're in favor, yes. And could you please send her out a letter of appreciation, please? And so we'll have to get. Yeah, we'll appoint Keith as the interim treasurer again. And we just have to get the ad out in the paper.
So a quick question, just procedurally. Do we follow our own bylaw and establish a treasurer search committee? Because we never did take that bylaw off the books.
Yes, we didn't take it off the books.
Yeah, we checked last time.
We checked it last.
We checked last time.
It's off the books.
Yep.
It's the selectmen and we'll have.
That's why last time you didn't have a committee.
And we'll have Keith.
Okay.
Yeah. I think between the four of us and with Keith's guidance, I'm sure that we can go through the fine.
Good.
So what paper then will we?
I just wanted you to make sure that you just vote on Keith as the interim.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, okay. An motion to appoint Keith as interim.
I'll second that.
So we'll have to figure out, Karen, when we're going to do our.
Yeah, I'll do it at the end of Thursday. I mean, I will put something together and by Monday we'll get something.
So do we want to get it?
Tuesday is the deadline and we can put something.
Do we want to get it in the TNG or we just want to use the local papers like in the law?
Let's do online, so I mean.
Go online.
We'll go online.
Yeah, because I reached out CMR PC wise and there's just nobody out there.
I know.
Have you ever used that?
What?
That Indeed?
I've used it. It's not, it's not anything different than most.
Monster.
Yeah. It's, I mean, right now, it's the quote-unquote hot place because they did the consolidation and I.
Do you recommend that's also advertised?
I think if it's not, if it's cost-effective, it couldn't hurt. So I think the key with that is that they both do the job posting, but then they'll also do some pre-screening resumes for you.
Okay. So we'll sit down, Karen, I'll come in and sit down and see what.
Yeah, I think we have to do more than just the.
Yeah, we have to do. Okay, the next one is to sign the MIA insurance rate for FY19. And the insurance has gone up 2.81 percent.
That's not bad. You had another resignation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, that was from Bill Noll, from the zoning board of appeals. Okay. As much as I regret to inform you, due to a medical condition, I have to resign from the zoning board of appeal effective immediately. It's another one you hate to be losing members of the boards.
Good guy.
So.
Motion to accept with regret.
Second.
All in favor, aye. And you'll do the same thing, get Bill out our letter of resignation, I mean, appreciation also. Okay, so the next one here, like I started off, on the health insurance, it went up 2.81 percent and that's not bad at all. Good, good rate, so.
Motion to sign.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
So it must just be one signature, chairman of the board, I suppose. Today is four, twenty-four?
Yes.
Twenty.
My father's ninety-second birthday.
Oh, really? Oh, my goodness.
Say very happy birthday. Congratulations. Are you still acting the way you said you were? Or is it slowing down?
Slowing down.
Slowing down. Okay, our next one here is from Sign Cook and Company, IOD coverage for FY19.
And that's for the first responders in the police.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
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 The next one, I think this, the reading invoices.
This one, no, the next one is, sign CMR PC invoices, the Draper and High Street ring.
I think all three got to sign that.
Yeah, we all three must have to sign.
Motion to sign.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In the meeting day, when we get to that, I forget, was it May eighth? It was, I think it was one day that. But it was one of the ones. Every week because it was May, it was keep it in the bag.
We should have set this up for the joint meeting at 7:30 or eight so you guys wouldn't have been waiting this whole time.
Okay. Okay, our next one here is for signed special use permits.
Motion to sign.
Okay, this is for Quavo, for the Greater Lowell Bass Fishers and the, and it's for five nineteen twenty eighteen. And the other one is six oh three twenty eighteen and this is for the Tri-County Barn me.
Yeah, keep going. We've got a motion, we've got a second.
Sign them.
Aye. And just FYI, on Saturday morning, we're going to put a new kiosk up at the Quavo programs for the kayakers, that map that got created. So they've got a kiosk in there, going to install it on Saturday morning.
They already did that without.
So we're going to go eight and fifteen?
Now, the next one.
Dates.
Okay, we're going to set the dates. Okay, what you saying?
If you go by the two-week schedule.
Two-week?
Yeah, because there was someone, I think it was Holly, moving on the calendar or it was Keith, and that he wanted you to commit to a certain date.
Okay, and then, and then we'll meet again on, oh, we'll be meeting three times that month, the twenty-second again?
Oh, okay.
So what do you have, May eighth and what's the next one?
May eighth and we have, um, May fifteenth and then we have the twenty-second, do we need to...
Yeah, I think we probably do right before town meeting and between the warrants and what have you.
Especially, you're going to have a meeting the week of the fourteenth? Right, you're meeting the week of the fourteenth with the finance guys?
Oh, no, they, they said that, uh, not yet with the...
Okay, all right, so, well, and then if we have the fifteenth and the twenty-second, I would need to help that.
And I'm sure in between time we can call some meetings, I'm sure we'll have to get together some more on a night we don't have a regular meeting with the advisory board.
Yep.
So we'll step back. Okay, so that's the twenty-second and then, ooh, why don't we just, do we still want to set, no, we want, two weeks.
So you want to go into June?
Yeah, why don't we go into June?
All right.
Okay, well, the, the fifth? Okay, and then we go into...
And of course you'll have the six fifteen meeting before the...
And the twelfth?
I do twelve.
Hmm?
Sounds like a plan.
And then, let's see, ten, I'll fill this in. Do we want to do another one, June twenty-sixth?
Might as well.
That would be after, yeah, and if we need to...
Post them.
We'll post them.
You can always cancel them if you have enough.
Exactly.
And this, the fifteen is already posted.
Okay, so we just want to do those for now and then we'll, yeah, we'll just do those. All in favor of the dates?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the fifteenth, we'll meet at, we said sixteen, at the school?
What?
Sixteen, yeah, fifteen is sixteen.
Yes, sixteen, in the, yeah, with the, with the...
Okay. Okay, now, but the next one here is under other. Please...
Oh, I don't know if you want to do any of that.
Do you want to do any of this?
What was it?
What's that one?
I just put some information in there, she...
Oh, yeah, no, this, no.
Okay, all right.
We're, we're working on this, it'll be long-term.
Okay, so why don't we skip over here to correspondence, let's see what's in the correspondence. All righty, this is from National Grid. National Grid is committed to providing our Massachusetts customers safe and reliable electric service utilizing the most cost-effective and efficient process and procedures. A recent review of our process for obtaining permission for installing new utility poles in a way, it's AKA, um, poll petition process, indicates an opportunity to reduce our costs and timelines associated with this practice. Because this is also potentially means a change in National Grid representation at a poll hearing, we are writing to provide you with some background and ask you for your consideration to change this. And it said, "Two years ago, we realized that a number of poll petitions in central Mass and western Mass were being denied resulting in additional costs and time delays due to not only to resign the poll location, but also for our rep to return to another hearing for the same petition. We began, we began a concerted effort to understand the reasons and rectify this issue. Having the National Grid design and resolve any or butter or DPW highway superintendent concerns prior to the poll hearing so that the attendance is, is not necessary at a hearing." And this was signed by Kevin Shaughnessy from the National Grid, he's a community and customer management.
You're basically saying that instead of sending them to the poll hearing, you're going to review it with the, um, DPW director and the butters first and then decide if there's any need for them to sign it, probably is it some...
No, we have a motion to have, uh, the National Grid design and resolve any or butter and highway department superintendent concerns prior to the poll petition hearing so that the attendance at the hearing is not necessary. I'd like a motion for that.
Get that motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
So that's, oh, kind of another chatter. Effective, this is from chatter, effective on May twenty-first, twenty eighteen, the channel Animal Planet will move from Spectrum Pricing and Packaging Tier One to a wider availability at SSP, select tier on all lineups. For a complete lineup, visit spectrum.com/channel. So that's it. Okay, now we move on with the advisory...
Your executive session after the meeting?
We should do the advisory board.
Yes.
We'll do that. Okay, so do the advisory board, they won't come up.
Hello? Oh, they gave, they gave, yeah, you put each other back.
This is...
That's great.
What? This is, everybody, time?
No, that came from, um, they just gave...
Oh, 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 this can be, these are our, um, okay.
Budget that you guys...
Yeah.
I believe they just want to go around, but...
Well, we don't, probably, what Carrie's going to do as far as the municipal transfers. Yes.
Hi, Charlie Clark is going to say officially.
Hi, Amanda Lincoln, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And I've never met this gentleman before either, I've seen you at meetings.
My name's Tom Reagan.
Hi, Tom.
Hi.
Hi, I've never, I've seen you, but I've never met you.
Okay, I've seen you around also, but you're much better than this woman.
And I don't know this fellow over here, doesn't have a...
Good, this is going to be my first one either. Thanks.
Oh, now, it's a working budget, so it's a little messy, that's why.
Now, how about with the municipal transfers, we had one of those.
It was only one, it was for the library.
The library, Steve, did you get that one?
I did, we weren't able to act on it because those have to happen in May or something.
No, no, it could be as early as April.
Okay.
Yet those happen as early as April?
Yeah, but does it really have to be municipal transfer, can't we just transfer out of the reserve fund?
I have no idea.
Yes.
I brought it up and I said...
Yeah, yeah, that's true, because actually...
Out of the reserve fund, yeah, the municipal ones happen, I think, after town meeting?
No, that, no, that would be, it would, actually, he's correct, um, May and June, you can do emergency transfers.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, but, but reserve fund can be any time.
Anytime, yeah, reserve fund is any time with the municipal ones, you don't need a town mission, town meeting support for that.
Okay, request for transfer funds, municipal, municipal relief, relief transfer. And I brought it up and a couple of people said, no, it's going to wait until May and so we just...
What's, what's the from account on there?
The, say it again?
What's the from account? Like, where's...
Uh, not to...
It's for the library.
To what account? No, from library.
Yeah, it's got something to do with books.
Oh, library, library?
Yes, the, uh, membership.
To what account? Library book account number one ninety-two?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we don't do it, they cut us out.
No, I understand that, so...
They're pumped.
This, this one.
Yeah, this is the one that we went back.
We signed that already.
Right, I just couldn't remember the from.
Let me see what it says.
Okay, so actually, and I don't think you've done any transfers out of reserve, it could be, it could be done now if you choose to take it out of the reserve account, because if it's an, if it's a, if it's a municipal transfer, emergency transfer, then if it's from a different budgeted account, it can only be done in May and June, uh, but if it's coming out of the reserve fund, it can come out any time.
And they need it because they don't have any more money.
Correct, and actually, from a standpoint of to meet the state law requirements, it has to come out of the reserve fund. We went through this a couple of years back, so if you, if you write in the from account is from the reserve, where it's, uh, um, because we have to, in essence, have budgeted a sufficient amount to meet the state law requirement, so...
And this is the library's reserve fund?
No, it's, it's the town's, it's the town's reserve.
And I think there was, what, we usually put in about twenty-five thousand into that?
Yeah, there was twenty-five from this year.
Twenty-five thousand goes into that.
Okay. We're voting to transfer from the reserve fund to the library book account number one ninety-two, one thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Five thousand, I thought.
Says one thousand.
It was one thousand.
There's, you have the books written for the library.
Yeah, and I apologize that I missed the fact that it wasn't from the reserve fund when it came through to us the first time, but it needs to be in order to, to meet Massachusetts law.
See, a lot of times, uh, Steve, people will come to you and they'll, they say that they are out of funds and they're not quite out yet, so a lot of times, the advisory board will advise them to use the money that they have in their account and then when they're all out of the money, then you can give them a reserve transfer, uh, fund, excuse me, you can give them money from the reserve fund to finish out their budget for the year.
Mm-hmm. Very well. Um, we will probably just take this set by on Thursday.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Rather than pull it out tonight. Thanks for your time, um, you know everyone here, excellent. Uh, we've, uh, been moving along, um, there's a couple of things that we're, we're just looking for in the way of guidance, um, I sent you an email on that. Uh, I wanted to first ask, I, I submitted two U copies of all budgets that we've approved and I'm...
Yes, they have, yes.
Yeah, very well, excellent, beautiful. Um, and, um, this body should feel free to just question away, ask whatever else, if, if you've got inquiries and everything else, but before we get into your budget, what, are, are, are you, are you ready to and expecting to review your budget this evening as well?
You already did, you got, you already did, you voted on it.
Yeah, we already voted on it.
With us.
With them, yeah.
Oh, with you, yeah.
Yeah, okay, very well. Um, I was just going to, I was going to go to the email that I sent on the twelfth of May, of April, just sort of walking through certain things. Um, we had asked for information, plead as possible information on free cash for the current year. I received a reply from Carrie Town Accountant saying this information not likely to be available until the twenty-fourth. Um, it's, um, just wondering the status of that.
We haven't heard anything.
I meant to follow up with her this morning.
I know that she's still, I don't know, she was supposed to have, Justin Cole was supposed to come down and help her and I don't know if she got help from him because she's right at a standstill right now and she needs Justin Cole and they've got to send in, because I, I call the Division of Local Services and they need to see a balance sheet and they haven't gotten anything yet.
Right, I know she, she sent us an update, what was it, about a week ago, related to the fact that she had taken the reconciliation as, as far as she could take it.
Yeah, that's what it was.
And that, in essence, there's, there's still some discrepancies, which is very typical when you're doing the reconciliation, uh, but she needs some guidance from Justin of the appropriate way to, uh, account for...
Yeah, that's what she said, she's at a stand, that's what I just said, she's at a standstill right now and she's waiting for Justin to come down or somebody from his office, but the Department of Local Services said they need a balance sheet first from the town and then they need schedule A. And they need that before they can do any approval of free cash, so we can't give you any date when free cash will be approved. And Carrie can't either, this...
Right, but, but, but Carrie, back to the process, it's that Carrie's got, um, it was four pages of reconciliation notes that are in the current year, as I understand it. So what we have is reconciliation through thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, and she has notes, and again, it was four pages of notes for eighteen, and that, uh, once she meets with Justin, that she'll work through those four pages of notes.
And I know some, some, sorry, you can take it.
No, 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 I'm just saying, and once, once, once she's able to go through those, those discrepancies and, and correct them, then we're in a, we're, we're in a position to understand free cash.
Yeah, and then they, um, I know that the treasurer's office already resolved a couple of problems with her already, so they've been solving them too. One was just, one happened during that same day and then I think Keith was working on the other problem.
So we basically have four pages of stuff that she needs to reconcile.
Got it.
To be able to be to the twenty-fourth.
And we're, we're shooting for, at the very latest, June fifteenth, I meant?
It's got to be before then.
There you go. Hike the ball, right.
Yes, and, and she's well aware of the concern.
Yeah.
Does she need any support in getting the, the Bay State folks in here to do the last bit?
I was going to call Justin if he hadn't called.
Okay.
I, I was going to get a call for Justin.
Yeah.
I had a letter started for him, I think finished, because I saw some, I'll talk later.
All right.
So, so we're just waiting for all this to just fall in together and getting the approval from Division of Local Services?
Okay.
Okay, what else do we want?
What else? Visibility and the warrants expected for the annual town meeting that will affect the two thousand nineteen budget. Uh, I've received a reply saying no warrant articles have been turned in yet. Uh, these live, live items will likely, uh, these items will likely have to be addressed after the warrant is closed for submissions.
Okay, but since then, um, I did have Mike Clark put all of the articles that did come in, um, as of, I believe it was Thursday, last day we were here, and we put copies in your mailbox, I hope you got them.
I just took everything out of my mailbox and I did not see anything in the way of copies.
Okay, well, I know Lois copied them and let me go check, let me make sure she didn't put them in the wrong mailbox.
Okay, yeah, well, I, I, what I got out tonight was, uh, just a copy of them, yeah.
Okay, because we did get several articles and what I can do is if she didn't, I...
Just, oh, I got it tonight.
Okay, if, if she didn't leave them, then I'll just make up some quick copies, right? I'll give you at least one copy.
Fine, yeah.
And what we have, but I'm, I'm going to check, hold on.
Cherry C, Beth, you sent us something which we printed out, that's the best thing we've got to work off, correct? Cherry, Cherry?
I had previously sent you a link to the DLS website where they'll update it and I, my understanding is now both the governor and the, the senate or the representative numbers are up, I don't think the senate has voted on it yet, but I can get you an update if you need it.
I've got four seventeen is the most recent thing I have.
I know I sent you some older documentation on four seventeen.
Yeah, Carrie sent me this.
Okay.
Town accountant sent me that, she also sent the, um, levy limit.
Okay.
Yeah, and, uh...
Right, so that's straight off the tax recapitulation, which doesn't take into consideration all the numbers that need to be part of the levy limit, so I can take you all through how to do the full funds available calculation again.
Yeah.
When's your next meeting? Thursday?
Thursday.
Okay. So, um, I did send you all the, I think I had previously sent you all the sheet we used to use for developing the full revenue amount, um, that includes not just the portion that's on the tax recapitulation, but it also allows for the transfers that we bring in from other departments, um, and, and the full calculation beyond just the tax levy, including local receipts and all that, so I can step you all through that.
Yeah, would you mind bringing that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it to you again and I'll step you through it. It's okay.
Would you have any, um, just off the top of your head, because I had a number which I think was on the email, as far as the possible revenue projections at eight million one thirty-four five oh one, does that ring a bell?
That sounds close to what it ought to come out, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, the other thing which I was a little bit, um, I mean, it's not off too much, but this is something that I think Lanny had given us or, I don't know if it was, the, um, uh, this was maybe off of your...
That's the old budget sheets.
Right, is this, is this out of date now from, this, this says sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and I was trying to figure what to use as a base, what was last year's budget was the actual number, because she told us to use sort of as an estimate, I think, two and a half percent off of, for final number. Here.
Oh, okay, so this is something that looks like, uh...
I don't know if it was Carrie or Lanny had given it.
This was probably Carrie.
Carrie did that.
Carrie, Carrie.
Yeah, Karen's been working with you.
Yep.
She said add, uh...
Add two and a half percent.
Two and a half percent to that number. Two and a half percent to that number.
Okay, that sounds about right.
Yeah, because, because we had like.
From a standpoint of like, are you talking about overall budget target?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I was, we're trying to figure out what sort of headroom we had going through, but we were, we were, the numbers on the fif, the fiscal year eighteen budget.
So, and that's why.
Where we're working off of, and then the top one was the eight million, one three four, so we just came to that last week after that email. So we figured more or less we have sort of an idea of what the.
Right, that's.
Range is now within a, you know, ten or twenty, thirty thousand, you're not, you know, order of magnitude.
Right, exactly.
Um, but that, we think that's more or less where we're.
Gonna land.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Have most of the budgets been coming through level funded, or?
You know, um.
This, this is a spreadsheet that I, that I put together. We've got basically, we still have the police. Is that right? I was gonna say, we have about, um, thirteen departments, um, so far have minimal increases. The rest of them were level funded, but, you know, the, the, the accounting area and then treasury had some, and, um, the, of course, the school budget was, was up, but for the most part, the ones you'd expect would come through at level funded.
Not big, not big bumps.
Not big bumps.
You know, five hundred thousand dollars, fifteen hundred, that sort of thing. Um, everything was justified, you know, extra hours for this person to do this job, that sort of thing. Uh, I can't think of any big bumps beyond that.
Yeah, the consultant, or the, or the treasury, or the new computer system, the VEDAR thing, that's.
It was a tax, I think the tax collector went into the new VEDAR system.
And the, um, the assessor wanted some extra hours also for the, uh, going to the new electronic, uh, record system.
Yeah, he talked, he talked to us about that last week.
And those all, those all made sense.
Oh, sure.
There is a petition article too that Mike has. That's the only other one that isn't in there.
Okay.
So I'll get a copy of it. He just hasn't given me a copy yet.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Anything else?
I, I, again, I'm, I'm new, so I'm not exactly sure how the whole process works, but I think we'll get to the point where we're more or less within the range up until all of the warrants, and I don't know how those get approved, or how, where the money comes from, if we're.
Right, and, and that's actually a, um, a piece of it, and I'm sure, I don't know if you want to describe it, or if you prefer.
Well, um, a lot of the monies like in the budget come, those are appropriated funds from the town. It, that's in the tax, no, that's not the tax. They're appropriated funds that come. And then we have, um, different, also in the articles and things come in. Some of the monies are appropriated there, and then we also have, um, we could do borrowing, or we can transfer from one fund to another.
So, so a piece of it, and, and you'll see, um, I know the CIPC is gonna be voting tomorrow on a, a plan to bring to us, um, which talks a little bit about the fiscal policies and kind of outlines, I think, what some of your questions are. So from, from a standpoint of raising appropriate funds, uh, that's where I was talking about that kind of consolidated spreadsheet that, that shows you how to bring in the cherry, um, sheet receipts, the actual, uh, property and personal taxes, as well as, uh, we do have a couple of special funds, one of them being ambulance, another one being the water department, where those can be sources of funding for specific things within the budget. So for example, the, the ambulance, um, salary and their expenses will come directly from the ambulance fund. That's a, an article that we vote every year in order to transfer the amounts of money that they need for their budget. So that's not necessarily part of that bu, bottom line budget. And then for the articles, we have options. So we, depending on how much headroom we have between us and the, and the combined levy limit, we can vote it as a raise in appropriate activity and just keep it within the, the operating funds. We can apply free cash to things that are on the, the warrant separately. Um, or we can, uh, if we, if we were in a position to take money out of stabilization, or needed to take money out of stabilization for something that was absolutely critical, that could be done as well. So those are the primary funding, and then as the, the chair spoke to it, um, there are some borrowing options as well. Uh, currently, we're using state notes for, for our borrowing, um, in the future. Um, and one of the things that the Capital Improvement Planning Committee addresses in their, um, plan is, is what we would need to do, the steps we would need to take in order to get ourselves a bond rating and be eligible for other funds, uh, which the reconciliation we're doing and the follow-up audit that we're doing are two critical pieces of that.
Because I know that, uh, Blanny had met, I think it was last week, with.
The Ro Clark, uh, Clark row.
And he said that we have to be audited before we can have, get the.
Right, we're actually gonna need to get audited at, probably at least two years' length.
So, just so, because we're together.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe stop for a second.
Yep.
On that very topic, because of the intelligence that we now have.
Yeah.
That we will be going through an audit as soon as we finish the reconciliation. And that what the bonding agent was saying is that we needed to be audited twice again.
Yep.
To be able to get a bond rating. So now what, to have in the back of our minds that as far as whether we budgeted this town meeting or the next special or whatever, we're looking at audits in subsequent years to be able to get a bond rating.
Yes.
Enough is enough. Let's get it done.
Because we haven't been bonded, we only had half of FY thirteen done.
Did you guys get that?
Yeah, we're gonna have to pay for audits for a couple of years in order to, um, get, in order to be able to qualify for getting a bond rating. And hopefully it's a good one, but.
And the last time we had an audit, and it was only half of FY thirteen. So we've gotta be audited, and the auditor wouldn't come back because of everything needed to be reconciled, the reconciliations between the departments. So this is why he wouldn't come back and do it.
Mm-hmm. But the good news is we're four pages away.
Four pages away.
Could you clarify something for me? Um, free cash, is that money that's been raised but not spent from previous years?
It's a, it's a combination of things, actually. So it's money that's been raised previously, budgeted, and then not spent is, is a portion of it. And the secondary portion of it is the difference between what the, on the annual tax recapitulation sheet, what the difference between what we say our local receipts is gonna be, which is things like fee, permit fees, and if we go and get tax title monies, or if somebody pays, um, if there, if there's a tax lien, but, or if there's a, um, if there's a tax taking, but it hasn't gone to tax title, and people pay back taxes from prior years. Um, those sort of sources of revenue, if we get monies back from, say, FEMA or MEMA, that can also go into free cash. So there's a lot of different sources. It's basically, um, what you didn't spend plus what you brought in in, uh, in excess of what you, what you had proposed you were gonna bring in.
So it's effectively a combination of unexpectedly higher revenue and unexpectedly lower expenses. Or expenses below budget.
Right, and then once you prove to the state that both of those things actually happened, it comes back to you in the form of free cash, which you're allowed to apply, um, to your, um, capital expenses for all intents and purposes. Or to the tax rate, if we're in a position where we've got great stabilization and we cover our capital expenses, we could also apply it to the tax rate.
Hmm, okay. What I thought was.
And then this year, we had used, um, stabilization money for a lot of the articles last year, and we made a statement that we need to put, I think, with a hundred and fifty-four thousand. That has to go back into stabilization, so we're hoping with a vote, vote from the town meeting, we'll be able to put that money back.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that's another thing that'll be in the capital improvement plan is to, uh, recommendations about the levels for stabilization, as well as, um, capital improvement spending.
Okay, I, I got, I have three more questions. Do we have?
Sure.
Certain amount of time, or no? Okay, um.
What's yours?
Is, who would we speak to about getting a list of, of the municipal employees with salaries so we can figure out what the actual, what a two and a half percent or two percent raise would make as far as an impact on the total?
The treasurer's the one.
Okay, well.
Treasurer who has resigned.
Right.
Well, Keith is in there, and you can also see.
Right, and, and it's, it's fairly.
Send an email. Is that, is what you're saying? Got it, okay.
If you want a tool that I used when I was on advisory, I have one that has most of the line items, and if you just punch in the salary from last year and do a percentage increase, it'll, it'll auto calculate for you the delta based on the increase.
Yeah, that, that, that would be fine. I mean, I don't know, did, did you send something like that to Steve before?
I, I didn't send that one. I have many, many files.
Yeah, because, because, okay.
Maybe that's what you should do, like, maybe, you know, when they have their meetings, maybe you should go in with them.
Right, I was gonna come, I was gonna come last week. I've, I've come a couple of times.
Yeah, maybe you should be like the liaison and help them out a lot.
Fair enough.
Second point was, again, since we're sort of operating a little bit blind, we have certain priorities as far as, because I, I, again, I might just be over, whatever, but I think we probably have more expenses than we have money. So where does the chicken come to, the push come to shut, as far as what priorities would we look at, or no? I mean, a lot of them have to be voted on.
So we actually have pretty good headspace between.
You think so, all right.
Between what our total, like, maximum levy is and, and what our budget is. Um, I think when they did the calculation last year, we were close to two hundred thousand dollars under our max. So if we only went up two and a half percent from what our expenses were last year, since the levy also goes up two and a half percent, we would still probably maintain that headspace. Now, with some of the, with some of the forthcoming expenses, we might not hold it quite there, but, um, we do have, we do have room between what our max levy is and, and what our operational budget is, for all intents and purposes. So we can sit down and do that math, and you all can figure it out.
All right, so that's, so we do that before the, the town meeting?
Yeah, yeah, we, we need to be doing that now as you're finalizing the budget.
Right, because all I was coming up with, as I said, was based on those calculations from last week, there was like three hundred thousand was how much more we could do over last year. But then if you were under that, then that would be five hundred, so the extra two hundred, so then, so then maybe we're, we're okay. All right, so I didn't.
And then when all, like, you wanted, like, then we wait for all the articles to come in, and we'll sit down with the sort, and we'll sit down and decide which articles, you know, should go on the annual town warrant, you know, that we wanna vote on, and then we'll go over the review also. We will decide, you know, where the money is gonna come from for those.
Sounds like a fun meeting.
And we should probably let, when we have those meetings, we should just have, do that on a night, you know, that we're, we're doing our regular, uh, meeting. You know, not a Tuesday evening. We should do it another night, so you don't have to wait around as long to get on the agenda.
And then the, just one last question. Um, when Lanny had come before us, this was a month or two months ago, she said that the, the VEDAR, all the stuff transferred from one to the other was moving along. Do we know where that is?
Oh, yeah, it is, it's moving all along, and Keith, um, right now, he was gonna be meeting, he, she had training on it. It's really a shame. She just had the training on it a couple of weeks ago. But our in-form treasurer is, uh, because he was treasurer in another community for many years, so he's right up on the VEDAR.
Is this the one that's called consultant?
Yeah, that's Mr. Keith Arsenal.
Keith Arsenal.
And he's been a town treasurer for thirty-five years, so he's retired, so he, he knows what he's doing. So he is, uh, he's pretty well up on the VEDAR system, so I think he is meeting with the, um, accountant tomorrow, and they're gonna talk about a few processes with the VEDAR system, how things should be transmitted.
Keith, correct?
Yes, Keith Arsenal.
Arsenal.
Six thousand for him to.
Yeah, got it.
And then you can also contact Holly Chisholm too. Holly will help you with things.
Right. Um, it sort of brings me to a couple of things. Um, when it comes to, you know, we, we withheld, uh, uh, voting on a couple of, um, salary increases. Uh, we've heard of stepping grade and various other things going on. And, um, and, you know, how, how, um, how should we handle certain things, you know, when looking, thinking about, here, we're looking for the treasurer, I'm not sure what sort of income or money we should be considering for a position like that. We've got a couple of other, uh, employees who are saying, hey, I, I really need more money, and I deserve it. And that's why I was asking for, in, in, number five here, better understand stepping grade review, where are we at with it? How will that affect our town budget?
Well, we had, um.
Uh, that stepping grade, the, um, that Collins is working on.
Yeah, the Collins Center, no, it's not gonna affect, no, it's not gonna be this year.
Referring to results. So in other words, guidance in, in.
The stepping grade, that, that was probably done probably thirty years ago, and it's so, it's off, off the chat. So I'm on personnel board, so when we do meet, we'll try, we look at different figures in between, and it's, it's way off. So we really just have to, you know, come up with a pretty good figure by looking at the whole stepping grade, what, what rate person should be at. Because we rate the schedule, the schedule is all, I mean, we have, you have a portion where you, um, for an example, um, with work experience. You know, we give them so many points, and then like for responsibilities, and all these different things. And then after we're done with that, we add them all up, and we have to see what the grade is, but the grade is way off.
Major issue.
Yep.
Just because there are a couple of salaries that are being discussed that you, you're on hold on.
Yeah.
Would it be appropriate that you in fact fill them in on those at, at, at a time that's convenient?
Yeah.
Or, or.
That makes sense.
But you do have to have, maybe we should get you to come, maybe on those two, we could probably just, uh, call a personnel board meeting, and we can discuss those. Yeah, that's what we have to do, if you could get them to me.
We're going to need something in the way of guidance, and then also for, we're expected also to recommend a, um, a percentage in, increase, a COLA. And so we, again, you know, just looking for guidance, something more.
If you could give me the, um, the two that want more salary.
Yeah.
And we can discuss those at a meeting. We'll go over the job description and see if, uh, where it should fit.
Okay, I'll contact you via email on that.
Okay. And now the ones that do get their increases, I don't think that they should get a, if they do get the increase, I don't think they should get the COLA too.
Not on top of it.
No, they shouldn't get it on top of that.
No, whatever gets proposed, auto include that.
Yeah.
Uh, and then from a COLA perspective, um, part of it depends on where the town sits when you start calculating the headspace. And part of it is also generally, we take a look at some of the other factors, like, uh, any economic factors, like what both federal and state are using for their cost of living increase.
Yeah, we had the, the state one for the.
Right, now what was the state this year?
I believe it was two point eight.
Two, two something, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like you, you suggested two point five, and then others, you know, were the, the two range around the.
Because they've been getting pretty regular, a couple of years in a row, they got three percent, I know, and then last year, wasn't it?
Two five.
Two five. So they've been getting a good COLA raise, you know, the last few years. I remember in recent years going without COLA raises.
Yeah, sure. But they, but our issue now is the economy.
Yeah, the economy.
Yeah.
How it's going.
We gotta stay as competitive as we can be.
Gotta keep the people that are familiar with the system, or at least we gotta understand there's a cost of training replacements.
Yeah, there's a significant cost in training replacements.
We wanna keep our secretary. To make our, we have to make our special list for our little secretary we have for us.
What do you mean?
To pay her, because we have her for several weeks.
She, she's the one that's paid eleven dollars an hour. For some reason, all the other Clarks are making thirteen sixty cents.
Which one? Is that your advisor?
Conversation, oh, that one, okay.
We have to, the, um, personnel board has to get together, and we have to rate that job, what it's worth.
Right on the hand, that's what, bottom information, eh?
Do we have her, um, did you, uh, oh, Holly has it all, I'm pretty sure. Has the.
We asked her last week if she'd been paid yet for the two months she's put in. She said no, so it's like.
Holly has everything. The last I was dealing with was Lanny, as of last, as late as last Thursday evening. Uh, I was told that, uh, her name is Allison. Allison would be paid this week. That's what I was told.
You'll have to check with Holly tomorrow. Holly told you she'll get paid.
Okay, that's.
If people, now, did she go fill out all her package that?
Everything's done.
Oh, everything's done.
Done, done, and done, yeah.
Hard worker too. She's just much better than, than me as far as trying to take notes and everything.
So if you wanna check with Holly, Steve, she'll probably, she's, she'll be in the water department office in the morning. That's an extension, what is that?
Seventeen.
And check with Holly, and she can tell you. And then she'll flip over and go down to, uh, to the treasurer's office after that.
Okay, okay. Um, regarding, um, uh. So, uh. That's all about your budget. Uh, details of documents, budgets, legal documents, written statements, other. that's all about your budget, uh, details of documents, budgets, legal documents, written statements, other requirements for the end of town meeting. You, you just had said something that, um, I just want to make sure that whatever you need from us for, in preparing for the town meeting is, you know, um, you know, like in written form, a list, you know, whatever, you just, and I'm blanking on, you, you just mentioned something a couple of minutes ago. I don't remember what it was, okay, um, but, um, uh, yeah, we're, we're, we're basically new to this. I know, I know Karen, that you need a, a, a statement or a letter from this body for the annual town meeting.
For the, for the annual town report, yes, I need a report. What I can do is.
You'll get that.
Yeah, okay, you can look, there's reports out there, you can look at the one they did last year.
Got them.
Use it as a guide.
Got my outline.
It's been on.
It is due, I have to, I have to go to the printer on the 30th.
Yeah.
So if everyone can put in, uh, their town reports, those who have, don't have it yet, yeah.
Yeah, I'm committed to it, you'll get it.
Okay, very good, thank you.
By the 30th, yeah, beautiful. Um, what else do you need from us or do you, you know, um?
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't have a problem, we need more frequently to fit your schedule or whatever. We're just, we're, I, I don't know what I went on before, but, you know, we're eager to process things and help, so.
As we are.
Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, just trying to get a handle on things too, and there's been, you know, some changes internally or whatever.
For instance, you just handed me articles, what am I, what, what are we supposed to do with those?
Well, that's kind of just a heads up because what happens is it comes to before the board and then the board reviews them and votes whether or not on the, um, on the warrant.
Part of it we'll have to do, and I can, I can walk you through how we've done it historically, um, is that there's a, a total balance sheet that you do, um, usually it's just a working copy, usually the accountant runs one either in parallel or you, you do a shared one. Um, where you've got, okay, here's the operate, you know, here's our total funds available, here's our operational budget, here's what the difference is between our operational budget and our levy limit, here's what the transfer available funds are from like ambulance and water and, and whatnot, okay? Here's what the articles are related, you know, here's what free cash is, here's what the articles are and what their, their costs are. And then some recommendations on, on whether or not you think the articles are appropriate to what we have available for funds is the first thing. And then the second thing is what your recommendation is for a source for that funding. Uh, usually that's kind of a shared recommendation between the accountant and the advisory committee. Um, you know, it can come from either or both. Uh, we generally hope that they agree, but if for some reason, you know, the accountant says, well, we should just do it under reason appropriate and the advisory says free cash, then we just have to make that decision on, on how to, how to grant the motion as we put it in front of the, the town meeting, so. So those are kind of the, the three primary pieces that we would be looking for. Uh, and I can step you through at least the tools and then you all can use your own judgment about what your actual recommendation is.
Thank you. Is, are these the types of things that we will review with you on this coming Thursday night or is there beyond, is that too much?
We can do that Thursday.
Okay.
So we can do that this Thursday.
We got a lot.
And probably you do your Thursday thing and then what we ought to do is target a time that we come back together and kind of go and do.
I can step them through, because I stepped them through it at the very beginning of the year, but a lot of time has transpired and a couple of phases have changed, so we can go back through it.
Because there's going to be some hard ropes and we might as well talk about them now.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and we're flying a little blind and so that, that's reality and we're going to deal with that as well.
Yeah. Is the, uh, police, um, union agreement together yet?
It's, we're going to be vote, voting on that and hopefully signing it during executive session. And I meant to forward you the impact sheet and I think I forgot to forward that to you.
We are looking to meet with Chief Blanchard, he was, he was waiting until that was done.
Yep.
Okay, um, we sort of have ten remaining for this coming Thursday night and then.
You'll have it.
May 3rd as well, so.
That was the last big department left, I think, wasn't it?
Correct.
Yeah.
While, while we were doing the negotiations, I did an impact sheet and put it together and I had meant to send it to both you and the chief and I don't think I did.
Okay.
So we're going to do that right now.
What are the questions, any other questions, any other thoughts, any other?
Utilities.
Utilities going into the initial budget.
Let's address that here.
Okay.
Because it's, it's supposed to come out of their budget or to other people's budgets, correct?
The fuel budget is, was a line item before, is it?
I'm going to ask what we get here. Um, might as well talk your budget.
Before, before we get there, I know that there are some departments or budgets that seem to have some income. For example, I know REC has the snack shack and so they generate some revenue there. I know that the, um, veterans agent, the money expended on, the, the way he explained it was the money expended this year, we get, I think it was three quarters back next year.
Right, but it comes back as part of free cash.
I'm sorry.
So the veterans agent comes back as free cash. That's part of the cherry, not free cash, uh, cherry sheets. So the state, what happens is whatever we spend this year, the state puts in our cherry sheet for next year, the three quarters comes back.
Okay.
So it's, it's already, it's already part of that cycle. Uh, the biggest one that, that probably has impact, the REC fund, I think recently they went to a, a privately managed fund for, for the snack shack. Um, we'd have to get with Jeff Landin to, to see, but those funds don't come directly back to the town right now. It's run by the equivalent of a booster organization that's a not-for-profit. Um, and the ambulance, um, is the primary special fund that, that drives a significant amount of money back into the process. All the fees and stuff that are like collected at the transfer station, that's part of those local receipts. That's part of, if there's a delta between what we projected and what, um, we actually take in, that comes back to us as free cash in the following year. So it's, it's not necessarily managed as part of this year's budget processing, except in as it comes back to us from free cash. So, uh, but their budgets aren't necessarily linked to what their incomes are.
Right, I know, that makes sense, I'm just, was just curious, I know for some things, to my mind, it may, it would be easier for me to understand things if you could look at things like for the ambulance, say, okay, well, this is what we're spending, this is what we're expecting for revenue and you look at it on more of a net impact than focusing on the expense. But there's probably a reason we do it the way we do it now.
Yeah, some of it just has to do with how that special fund accounting works. Um, ambulance generally takes in quite a bit more than what they spend, uh, but that's because then every 10 years you buy an ambulance out of the same funds. So they're basically kind of bankrolling themselves for their later capital expenses.
Yeah, for, for when they need a new wagon.
Right, so.
Now, do you have many more questions or some of the questions can maybe move on with that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking Thursday, um, and then I was just going to, let's just look at your budget.
Yeah, so we can go over our budget with you.
A lot of it's level funded, I will tell you, if you look on the first page, the only two that are significantly different or that are different, first of all, I don't know why the moderator's salary is on our page.
We've heard a number of those, by the way.
What?
We've heard a few of those.
Okay. I don't know why the moderator's size, not really supposed to be on our page, but if you turn the page to the second one I have, we'll break down the general government in line 80, 17,000 is because we have that, um, contract with our IT person for 16,560, 440 for a buffer, that was as recommended by Kerry because sometimes if he asks for something above and beyond what's on the contract. So 17,000 dollars for that. It is up from last year because again, we signed that contract with him, we didn't have enough money. But if you notice, the next one down, went down significantly because we did get, that's for the town website, which we had to pay last year to set it up and to get it going. And if you look at that, it's explained to you, we're only going to ask for 6,000 versus 11,300. 1750 for virtual town hall, 2,000 for the emails per year, 2,000 for Tom George, believe me, he won't use it, he used a quarter of that last year, but I just wanted to have that in because we are trying to get him to do a little bit more to help us.
Tom George.
Tom George, he is the, um, he's actually a firefighter and he works for the town of Barry and he also does, um, website work on the side. He was highly recommended to us, he works for practically nothing, truthfully, he paid $500 last year, something like that. Um, but virtual town hall, a problem we're having right now, one of the problems with them is they, it's costly for them to come in and do training to teach us how to post on the website. They did have online courses, to tell you the truth, most, most of the department heads don't know how to do it. I don't know if you do, Peter, but most of them don't, it's just difficult. This is something that I'm hoping Tom George can step in and again, he doesn't charge that much money, he maybe give us a course, teach us how to do it. We're not going to use all that money, but I wanted to have just in case we need it. And Kerry agreed with that too, 250 buffers with that, 6,000 dollars. Everything else is basically the same except for the general insurance. And by the way, um, when I talked to Kerry, Kerry didn't understand why the general insurance is also on our sheet, which wasn't on any sheet, so I stuck it on here.
Yeah, you, you mentioned that.
Because she said it should be with the treasurer's office. However, I said this year, leave it on my sheet because I paid the general insurance bills as opposed to the.
Well, and that's exactly why it's on our sheet, is because it generally is paid out of the selectman's office. And, and like historically, you, I think you're also the one that usually sends out the, the request for quote, even though we wind up with the same agency because there's only a certain number of them.
Well, I have, I have my two points twice, but Kerry begs to differ, she thinks it should be with the treasurer, maybe next year. Well, I'm going to leave that up to her, but basically that's, and that's the other item that's going up 3% across the board. Again, that's not carbon stone, that's a guess on our insurance agent's part, but that's what we allow.
We're looking at 840% line number.
Um, number 840, right, it was, um, 141, 110, and we want to bring it up to 145, 343, that represents a 3% increase. The phone is staying the same, um, you go to the, basically the next two pages were the municipal custodian wages.
Can we back up?
Yep.
The, uh, computer maintenance.
Yes.
What, what was, what's driving that increase?
Okay, if you look on your next page, we have line number 80, it's, uh, we signed a contract with an IT person to manage the accounts and he comes in and he, he's on call basically for us.
Okay, what did we do last year or in, what do you?
Well, last year we really didn't have much of a budget. The year before, we had Tantascwa come in and it, it, it didn't work out, no one was happy with it. Uh, it was, we had to get a ticket to get service and it was pretty costly. At, at a per hour, um, fee, this, this IT person is much cheaper. And we did get quotes and, uh, and the recommendation with the board of selectmen and Kerry, who was quite computer savvy, that's why we chose Larry, who's the lowest bidder.
So you did have across all town hall, everything, right?
Yeah, yes, see what happened is, let me explain something, what happened is before we had just our regular computers, it was on one server, and I'm not very computer savvy, so you'll have to forgive me, but when we had the new computers, which were really refurbished computers from a grant from Tantascwa, it put it all on this, I guess it's a server or it's some kind of, of, of technology that requires, uh, it to be maintained. So that was the mistake I guess we made, we were maintaining everything as we went along, just to call an IT person when we needed them. This whole new system requires an IT person to maintain it, it's quite complicated.
So the system we acquired requires a higher level of care and feeding.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so they, they basically went from a peer-to-peer network where it was pretty much everything running on individual hard drives with only some of them hooked up together to running an actual server down in the basement. Um, and the challenge that we're having is just the, having somebody consistently on call to, to do that maintenance, so. It's the same individual who used to maintain the kind of cobbled-together network, but now we're, we're doing it at a level that makes us compliant with things like mass general law and the records-keeping requirement and the backing up requirement and instituting a certain level of internet security that didn't exist previously, so.
So will we be non-compliant with those things in, uh, in the past?
I can neither confirm nor deny, so.
But, but you can confirm we have a plan to be compliant.
We, we have a plan to be compliant and he's part of that plan.
And he's very good, you call him and he's here, all right.
And he's keeping us running, right?
Yeah, he's keeping us running.
The going.
Saying things as they break, so you don't have to know.
Yeah, he fixes things as they break, he'll take a part of an older one and he'll put it into two, the one that where it needs to be fixed.
And for the most part, most of his services have been covered under the, the.
We have not paid an, uh, uh, other than I think a $40 hard drive or something, we have not gone above and beyond what's covered in his contract.
What's currently covered in his contract, so.
So we're very happy.
Yeah, we have a three-year contract, this is the second year. All right, if you want to go on to the next one, um, basically.
So I just, so this one right here, this 123681 is this column added up and then you're adding.
Yes.
Legal, wherever legal is.
Oh, let's get down to 440 with the legal, that's another thing.
440 legal.
We did put an extra $5,000 in and that was under the recommendation of town council because we have, as you know, litigation this year.
Well, it's really in three buckets and probably the most important twist and change is the solar fields.
Yeah.
That we've, I mean, we're, we're talking mega bucks.
Yeah.
And legal.
And legal fees for, to, to support the negotiations related to the solar fields. And what we have is, we see the one on Route 9 and everybody sees that and complains about that. Reality is there are at least two others that are going to come, they're going to require the same due diligence in reviewing those contracts to make sure. And again, Al's doing a terrific job standing in front of, staying in front of the contracts and making sure we're getting a fair deal out of them. But he certainly needs the support, so we have that. The second bucket, it's kind of like the surprise, beyond litigation, is the, uh, what, what I'll call abandoned housing. You heard us talking earlier, we're going to take down one, we've got a dozen behind that that have, we need to figure out what we're doing.
Right, and for each one of them to be totally covered, we really need to, to not just, not just do the, the public hearing, but also take it to land court and ensure that we've got coverage from the standpoint of, of being all straight and legal and taking them down.
So those, to me, for the kinds of monies that we're talking about are significant.
Yes. Already, like Sharon, because I already had turned over something to town council on questions that Sharon had and didn't she find something that she corrected for you? So you really.
Well, well, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's well worth it.
It was for an existing project, the, um, the applicant, the successful applicant had, um, a transaction he wants planning board to sign off on and I had to determine through council whether we were the appropriate party because it did constitute a contract and have received an answer on that. And also she reviewed the text of this proposed agreement and found something that had been drafted by them in front of the town, but the company had removed a significant term from it and she restored that, that, or that term.
Yeah.
So I emailed the applicant and said, this is what we're willing to sign, not the one we sent us. And we've got, planning board is meeting tomorrow and this is on the agenda.
And then also she's, um, reviewing the pilot programs also, 3% or two, so we really need, you know, that's where the extra money comes, it's really going to be needed.
And we'll see the receipts from it as well, but you got to pay the bill upfront.
Have to pay it.
One of the two things regarding legal service, well, that type of thing, I recall a conversation you and I had about having each department break out legal services on their own.
Uh, we've talked about that.
Okay, so in other words, there it is, thank you very much. What about utilities, um, some have come through, some of the department heads have come through with utilities indicated on their budgets, others have not, and, and does that reflect a, where is that reflected in here as far as a, a, a reduction?
Well, the municipal property utilities is staying the same as per, this is the, um, the last, next to the last page.
Town, town hall, correct, at the top?
Yes.
Yeah, municipal utilities, that, Kerry said to keep it the same, that's why I did, so, I don't know, I'll have to double check the third question.
Because I know it was Kerry's suggestion to take a lot of those and have the departments themselves.
Yes, and that's what they did, yeah.
It just seems that there would be a, a, a coinciding reduction somewhere here.
I'm going to, I'll go check with her on that, I don't know why.
And I can tell you right now, it was, I'm looking at 2017 and 2005 and, and I, uh, I'm just struggling for one right up the top of my head. It was eight grand for somebody. Okay, and, um.
Is that how it worked before, is that there was this one line item in the, um, the general government area for utilities?
It was only for someone and it's not. What happened is it was only for someone, and it's not for all, what it is is, there were some bills that the board of selectmen's office paid, and it was, um, telephone bill for, um, charter for the cave, uh, for the fire department and for the highway department, I don't know why that is, because we should probably be paying our own, and then also there was, uh, the, uh, the gas bill for the library, for the library, the fire department, and the highway department were also paying that bill for them.
It would have been municipal heating.
Yeah, municipal heat, a couple, I, I'm gonna have to check with her, because they keep it the same, but, yeah.
That, that is the one.
Probably would.
I didn't want to double count it.
I can give you a direct, for instance.
Okay.
Highway, they indicate eight thousand dollars in utilities on the two thousand nineteen budget, which did not exist in any previous budget for highway, so, we, we, we would be looking for eight thousand dollars coming off of, I think, this somewhere.
Right, okay, it's not gonna be a municipal property utilities, um, I'm gonna have to check and see what.
Yeah, okay, and.
That's what I'll do.
I'm remembering a couple of them, and I can give you those, they're on those sheets.
Okay.
They're on those sheets.
Yeah, yeah, yes, if you can do that, that'd be great.
Diesel, do you want to, or is it, do you say it was on this one?
Now, the highways, don't they always hit the diesel?
I said highway.
Oh, yeah, yeah, as far as, and that's another thing, these last, the last page.
Yep.
The, um, diesel fuel, that's something that the highway determines whether or not we should go up or down on, I don't know why it's on our page, because I don't pay any diesel fuel at all, but it just happens to be on this page, and municipal gasoline, I'm sure this was the use for the town vehicles, whatever, again, that's the highway department and why it's here, um, print town report will leave him the same, municipal heating fuel, extra five hundred dollars as per Kerry, but I'm gonna double check, something will have to be adjusted.
I would take a guess that the fuel is on here because it's marked as general government and feeding all of your vehicles, all of your gasoline.
Right, I just don't know why it's on board of selectmen's only because the highway usually determines the, the figure, I, I called and asked her, that's why it says same pers, uh, per Cindy, so that's staying the same, okay, so I'll have to do a check with fuel.
The only thing I'd like to mention is that telephone goes through the switch down
here, doesn't go through the charter, charters, their internet and telephone.
Right, right, okay, but ironically, uh, the account it came from was the telephone bill, so that's the one we're gonna have to check too, uh, it was just marked telephone, at least that's how it was set up long ago.
They're gonna just roll it down to telephone, rather than creating a line.
Yeah, but I will, um, double check those two things right in there, so.
I have a question on the general government, do we have any metrics, um, for example, for, um, municipal heating fuel, I see we're bumping it by five hundred, is that based on project, unexpected, um, fuel costs for the coming year, because my thought is that, um, what's, what's the basis for that, because fundamentally my question is, it's, um, and I believe the heating agency uses something called degree days, and they use those to determine when they need to over truck to my house and fill up the tank, and so the thought is based on the number of degree days and the price of fuel oil, you can come up with a pretty good understanding of how much you're going to spend in a year, so, to me.
That's what Kerry recommended, I don't know how she came to that figure, so.
Do we still go up, do we still get involved with, um?
We get the state bid for the oil.
Yeah, we still do that with central mass planning commission.
So we're, we're part of a bulk purchase, and that gets us a good regular, that's.
And are we on automatic delivery, Bill?
Well, on auto, well, the only one that's really lucky now is, is the fire station, that one building.
No, I thought he, didn't he convert it to gas?
And he has, he has one that he's, I just got it, just Peter Peterson.
I believe, my recollection says that fire has gas and oil.
Yeah, one of them's, yeah, he did convert one, he didn't convert the other one.
No, no.
And then, and I guess I would say similarly for diesel and gasoline, it's like that's a function.
I'm sure you're gonna go with the state bid, you can ask Cindy, but I'm, I'm sure they are.
Okay, so they're expecting, the state bid, they're expecting the, and the state bid locks in a price for the year?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I know, I know she goes by the state, you can confirm that with her, but I know that to be true.
Okay, because it's, it's just, I'm, I'm a metrics kind of guy, and so, budgeting this, it says, okay, I need to know how much a gallon costs and how many miles I'm expecting to drive, and so therefore, if the price goes up or the amount of driving changes, that's gonna change the amount we need to budget.
Legit questions, though, given, especially given the fact that the municipal probably need to see what our breakdown is now that we've converted to gas, and we've got some slightly newer burners, so.
Hmm, yeah, should, should actually see us, positive.
We should see it moving the other direction.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, gas went up more than, than oil this last year.
Utility wise.
What?
Utility wise, I have one more for you.
What?
Fire separated eighty-nine hundred dollars out for utilities.
Okay, well, that's what I said, I'm gonna check with, uh, with Kerry tomorrow.
Okay, well, those are the two that we've received, fire and highway.
Fire and highway, and that's exactly right, the only other one is the, uh, library too, because we were paying for the library's, uh, gas.
So we should call CNN on line. Thank you, word, okay, uh, any other questions regarding the budget for, um, our, our selection here? Great, we don't have a bunch of, uh, we've got a couple of follow-up things of best we're gonna see on Thursday.
I was gonna see you last Thursday, but you called me off.
How much you spent?
Yes, we're glad we did. I'll get you, um, a question regarding town employee salaries.
Okay.
I'll call Holly tomorrow, and.